Okay, we'll go ahead now and start with the next panel. And I hope you've had a chance to learn from your neighbor on some of the compelling reasons you're in the room today. We really are honored today to have a distinguished panel of folks who've worked across the state to improve education from a variety of vantage points. Just briefly, you have your, their bios in your program here, but you can read that at your leisure. But starting at the end of the table, Mr. James Bostick, who's a former state school board member and also had a career at Georgia Pacific. He's currently on the Board of Directors at ACT Inc. So if you have concerns about ACT testing and...
(laughter)
He's got a meeting tomorrow, so hit him up now.
That's a good one.
We're happy to have Mr. Bostick with us today. And he's been also one of the team members that the governors have appointed to help local systems with board issues, particularly, I think your first venture with Brad was down into Clayton County. Next to Mr. Bostick is Mr. Tony Arasi. Tony is the GSBA's Director of Board Development, and he's been in that role since 2005. And Tony's also previously an educator primarily from Cobb County, where he was principal for 10 years and five of those at Walton High School. Next to Tony is Mr. Brad Bryant. Brad is Executive Director of REACH, and that's a new position for Mr. Bryant. Mr. Bryant was, for 12 years, was a board member in DeKalb County and then served on the State Board of Education and was superintendent of the state for a short period. Next to Brad is Ms. Zenda Bowie, who was a, on the Fulton County School Board for over 17 years and also currently works as Director of Field Services at the Georgia School Board Association. Please join me in welcoming our panelists today.[135.12][135.12](applause) Moderating our session today will be Dr. Teresa Wright. Teresa is the manager of our, of the Survey Research and Evaluation Unit at the Carl Vinson Institute of Government. So please join me in welcoming Teresa.[152.12][152.12](applause)
Hi. We're all happy to be here today. For today's panel, we want to play it loose and casual and just continue the conversation that Tom Gensel started. We have with us here, not to like tell anyone's age, but cumulatively over 75 years of experience sitting on or working with school boards.[180.48][180.48](laughter) So we want to focus on this wealth of knowledge and experience we have here about school boards in Georgia. We want to continue the conversation. And I want to start the conversation and let the panelists run with it. They know each other well, and they have a wonderful style of conversation flow. So what I'd like for us to talk about first is board effectiveness. And all of you have worked and served on, worked with or served on so many boards. Talk to me a little bit about the hallmarks of board effectiveness. And Zenda, can you get us started?
Yeah. You know, Tom Gensel really covered the waterfront. He did a good job of that. So I'm not going to do too much repetition of what he said, but the things that he pointed out make so much sense and is so relevant, not only here in Georgia, but anywhere in the United States. So I set aside four points that I'd like to bring out when we start talking about a board of education. For me, the hallmarks of a good board, first of all, is that there is collaboration and communication with the public so that everyone feels responsible for students. Tom mentioned that the school board is responsible, but we as a community need to send kids to school ready to learn with their pants up on their waist, not using four-letter words on the way when they're in front of adults who've got gray hair. Second is that the board meetings need to make sense, even to a first-timer. Tom pointed out the acronyms. We have to be careful about use of acronyms such that while they can be used, they are explained, and people don't feel intimidated by the board. The focus of that board meeting needs to be on students and their opportunities for achievement. And there needs to be healthy debate in that meeting with thoughtful consideration of others' ideas. And that is obvious, not only through the comments that school board members and the superintendent make, but through the body language, through the facial expression. You all know what I mean.[327.58][327.58](laughter) Okay. The third is mutual respect, and that mutual respect has to be obvious. I don't know about you, but when I walk into a meeting, a school board meeting, or a training session, you can feel either the love or you need to get a coat. And you can feel it when you walk in. People don't have to be married to each other. They just need to be willing to work together. And I think that's very, very important. That mutual respect is for members of the governance team, including the superintendent, and also for the stakeholders, for those who have taken their time to attend the meeting, for those who haven't taken their time to attend the meeting, for parents, for people in the community, and folks, most of all, for students from pre-K all the way up. The last thing that I point out when we think about hallmarks of a good board is that there is an atmosphere of hope and well-being, that there is optimism for the board doing its best for all students in spite of the limited resources. So I think that people have to walk in looking pleasant, looking hopeful, and doing the best that they can with what they got. And when we can walk into a room and see people functioning that way, it's a hallmark of a good board.
Right. Thank you. I always like to be with Zenda. I was her president-elect at Georgia School Boards, and she's just a wonderful, wonderful person to serve with. I also want to thank University of Georgia. I was down in Dodge County yesterday, and deep in Bulldog Country. And I told them I was coming to Athens, and I said I was worried that I was going to end up with a knee injury. And I walked in and saw a good friend, Mel Garber, and he's on crutches with a knee injury. So I hope that I can exit out of Athens today without being on the injured reserve. It was also interesting when Jennifer said about the molecular biology, and I was trying to think which was more difficult, being a part of a governance team that has an impact on students or being in a room with a lot of molecular biologists. I would argue that it's the role that each of you have. And in setting the frame, what I would tell you would be is that if you, if you ask the four of us to spend the next four years working together as a board of education, I think that we could do the work. And I say that because I know each of the individuals that's sitting here with me. We've worked hard over the years to try to be in relationship with one another. And if Tony were our superintendent, I would thoroughly enjoy being in that role, and I would enjoy serving on a board with Zenda and Jim. And as I look at what's happened over the course of my time, my 20 years plus around school board governance, I think what we've done is we've moved from a, or trying to move from a place where there are a lot of isolated impacts to where we're creating a collective impact for our community. And what we would have looked at 20 years ago would have been a simple task, which would be more like following a recipe. The DeKalb that I grew up in was you gave a principal this, this, and this, and you expected to get an outcome of this, this, and this from the students. I don't know that that really worked 30, 40 years ago, but that was the way that it happened. And then the second, and this would be the molecular biologist approach, is that we're dealing with a complicated set of issues. And that would be is that if we all put our heads together, we could find a solution and we could replicate it in every part of this state. An example would be sending a rocket to the moon. The world we live in in education, I think, is the most difficult, and it's the complex area where we're raising children, helping raise children. And those of you in the room that have children, and more than one, understand that to do that job effectively, you and those that are helping you raise that child have to adjust your strategies, your tactics, to meet the individual needs of your own children. And when you try to homogenize that or to create broader strategies that serve everyone, all too often you fall short of the mark on all of the children that you're trying to reach out. So from my vantage point, the place I want to touch on that's most important, I believe, is the relational side of the work we do. And if we don't get the relationships right, then we are going to walk into a boardroom where you better put your coat on because there's going to be a frigidity that's not going to allow good things to happen. And so as I break the relationships down, what I would say is that that involves a myriad of different relationships. And so you've got your internal relationships where you're working with the board members that have been elected. And Tom, I had this written down even before you said it, so, but I want to emphasize this point is each time a new board member comes onto your board, you effectively have a new board. And I served with 36 different board members and four superintendents on both the local board and the state board. And so while folks could say I served on the state board of education and the DeKalb County Board of Education, in reality, I served on something between 30 and 40 different board members, boards during the time I served. If you don't prepare for that and plan for that, you really create some difficulties. And think about your own family relationships. You start out by yourself, and the world revolves completely around you. If you take on a significant other, you have to learn to negotiate that. And then if the two of you get that right and a child comes along, boom, everything needs to be focused on the child. Another child comes along potentially. And then the more interesting dynamic, the world I'm in now, is you have daughters-in-law, sons-in-law, grandchildren, those things. At every point, you need to be flexible enough to create space to welcome in those new team members. So again, underscoring that point is that it's a different... The other thing is, if, once you get your internal work going well, then how do you bring that superintendent into the frame? And your superintendent, by law, is Secretary of the Board. And I have seen boards where that superintendent could have been in another room in terms of how the board was trying to conduct its business. And then the larger piece of the external, how you deal with other elected officials, the community, the voters, the media that Jennifer mentioned. And in each area, if you don't reach out and try to create a proactive and affirmative relationship with those individuals, they're going to be at a point to where they may sit waiting to take you down if there's an opportunity. So I just would focus as much time and energy on building as many healthy relationships as you can because an absence of those relationships, from my vantage point, is going to create some very negative results for the students you serve and the communities that you're in.
Great comments by Brad and Zenda. I'd like to touch on a couple of thoughts, and particularly as I look out the audience and recognize a number of the superintendents and board members here. One of the challenges for you each and every day is that board members are elected individually, but they govern collectively. And one of the challenges, of course, is to learn to function in that framework. The other challenge is the community may not understand that. So we have many districts, board members, and we encourage new board members to start educating the community that although you are a representative of the community, serving on the school board, you're one of a team. And that's a constant kind of thing. You know, Tom made some great points this morning, and one was the one-to-one interaction with individuals. There's probably no one way a school board member or a school board can, in one newsletter, one news article, or one video, get everybody in the community to understand that. So it's going to have to be a sustainable, day-to-day kind of thing where you and the rest of your board members are going to have to try to make that known to as many individuals as possible. And even when you do, some of them may not like it because they voted for you.
That's right.
And then is, well, I wrote a check for your campaign. I know a number of board members, as we go around, will talk about when someone complains to a school board member, how they'll say, "Well, you know, I voted for you." Some board members who've been on the board a while have said that if everybody voted for me, that said they did, that's as many people in our county. Another challenge, and we encourage and appreciate many of the board's roles and responsibilities, the role of the superintendent, the role of the school board, is a constant, it's a relationship. And just like any relationship, there's going to be slip, and, "Well, maybe I should have done this or shouldn't have done that. Maybe we need to regroup." And so the roles and responsibilities, we have a very nice chart that we use with our school boards to kind of lay that out, but there's no one chart, and again, no one training session where everybody's going to understand it. It really has to be a day-to-day kind of thing. Other challenge, and again, many of our boards and superintendents do a great job. There's one superintendent and five, seven, and in some cases, nine, and in one district, 10 board members. And for five, seven, nine, or 10 to work as one is a challenge. So that's where the teamwork piece becomes so important. The superintendent has to understand that and navigate that, and it's a day-to-day thing, and the team has to continually work together. Two other points. One is that many times when we go in and we work with school boards and we see that they're having challenges and maybe having conflict over one issue, we try to remind them that, "Think about what you have in common." So many school boards have so much in common, but they tend to spend maybe too much time on what they don't agree on. You know, once in a while in training and just sitting with board members, say, "Do you want every child to have a good opportunity to learn?" We think everybody does. "Do you want kids to be safe at school?" Everybody does. "Do you want kids to feel like the school cares about them and their parents?" Everybody does. So every once in a while, our boards are doing better and better when they're challenged. And once in a while, you know, let's sit back, take a deep breath, and focus on what we care about and have in common versus spending most of our time what we don't agree about. My last comment is, and this is a compliment to the state of Georgia, that's state board members, past and future. Georgia has a structure in place for school board members as good, if not better, than any in the country. And Tom is probably our expert on that. But we have very rigorous, well-thought-out state standards that give best practices and are a very good structure for new board members and boards to focus on. We have a code of ethics that's probably as tough and as stringent as any in the country. And we have mandatory training, probably as much training. I'm not sure, there may be another state or two that requires more training. Not every state has required training. So I think those three things are a testament to our state takes school boardsmanship serious. It doesn't mean that just because we have those things in place, every board will be perfect. We know that that's, but it is at least a structure and a lot of people trying to work together.
Well, let me, since you've heard the earlier comments, let me talk a minute about some of the warning signs, if you are a board member or you're a superintendent, that you ought to be concerned about when you have your first meeting. First thing is that if board members come to the board and they have campaigned with a personal grudge against an individual, members of the school board, and the superintendent, you are in trouble from the very beginning because that is not, that is not what school board members are supposed to do. And so you already have a problem. And as Brad said, it's important to develop a relationship with other board members. But if you start out with board members coming with grudges and personal agendas and all of those things, you are in trouble, and you are going to have a difficult time establishing a relationship with the board member in that particular case. Secondly, if you have a board member who comes and they do not have the highest personal integrity and character, you are in trouble because that is what you want to have in a school board member. You want them to care most about student achievement and what you can do in that community. You do not want them to be interested in hiring principals, teachers, worried about vendor contracts and those types of things. If that's their interest, you are in trouble as a, as a board member, both the superintendent as well as individual board members. Of course, superintendents are appointed by the board, and frankly, they have to spend a lot of their time not interested in the majority of the board, but they also have to be interested in the people who are not on their side of an issue, to be sure that they explain what the issue is, they have them understand where they're coming from on the issue, and in fact, try and get them to be part of not just a majority, but to have it so that most of the time, the whole board is voting for an important issue. Thirdly, strategic plans are very, very important. And if you have a board member that doesn't, can't even spell strategic plan, you're in deep, deep trouble, okay? Because they will not understand what you are trying to do as you set out goals and objectives for the, for the school board. And you may even have some members of the school board whom I'm talking about in here today. I'm just telling you that those are not things that make you a very good school board member. And finally, data. If you cannot understand the data that is brought to you on your school board, and you can't understand the, what it says about the students who are in this district, you need to get the hell off the school board because you don't need to be there for those purposes because that is the essential part of understanding what needs to happen from student achievement.
Great. That was a great introduction, talking about effectiveness. However, I'm not going to let you get away with being that big picture. You guys have a lot of experience. You've worked very closely with boards, and frankly, you're the people call when boards start going down the wrong track. So I want to, I want to talk a little bit more about how you do some of the big-picture things you talked to us about setting as goals. Brad, talk to me a little bit, how do you build those relationships? What if you have Jim's kind of worst kind of case scenario of a school board member who sits beside you? How are you going to learn how to build those relationships?
Well, building on what I've heard this morning, I think I would start with one of the things that Tony mentioned, is finding where there's common ground. One of the places that I have always found common ground is that even if you are at odds politically or on an ideology standpoint, usually board members don't offer to run or serve unless they're committed to their family. So usually you can find common ground in what's going on in your fellow board members, your superintendent's family. The, I think that it's extreme, to build on the point about the media and social media, I think it's far, far harder today to maintain those healthy relationships than it was 24 years ago when I ran because there are so many folks that can put negative comments out there that if repeated three times, become the truth.
Sure.
And to be honest with you, I'm not sure that I would encourage either of my two children to step into a public frame like a DeKalb County today because it was healthy for my family, but I'm not sure that it's currently in that same thing. It's also extremely time-consuming, and while I appreciate the fact that a non-member board, I was, all but three months of my time on the DeKalb Board was on a seven-member board. So I had seven individuals, including the superintendent and six other board members, that I needed to really invest my time and energy in ensuring that we had a healthy relationship. I won't say that it can't happen with nine or that it would be easier with five, but I would say that building those healthy relationships requires being on your relational game 90% of the time. And so the more folks you have to be in relationship with, potentially, the more difficult it is.
Continuing on that note, then, if you, if you are trying to build a relationship with someone, talk to me a little bit about that onboarding process, about that, Tony, you talked about shifting the mindset from running for office to becoming a board member.
Yeah. Remember, it's very easy to, not that any politicians would ever do this, but it's very easy to promise a lot of things when you campaign for an office. And then actually, once you come on board, it may be a different, different piece. One of the things we're trying to encourage you, school districts, to do more and more is try to grow your own future board members. We, we at GSBA partner with GPE, and every two years, I think, a number of you in this room have actually come to them, where we do candidate trainings all around the state. We can't do it alone. There are a number of school districts that are trying to do information sessions for prospective board members within their own community, at least to make sure that they have data and a better understanding of things and know that there's state standards, know there's a code of ethics, but more importantly, know some of the inner workings of the, of the school district. And we think the other piece is, once you get a new board member, even if it's one who's campaigned negatively, it's your job, it is your responsibility to welcome them and to model what you want that new board member to do and try to make sure they have as much accurate information as possible and let them see that they, in the end, can and will be powerless if they don't work with the, with the larger group. And that tags along to a couple of the comments Mr. Bostick made is, we have to be patient with some of the board members who do not have an education background. Give you an example, it's very important, as he mentioned, that they understand data, but that might not be easy right away when you look at a lot of the different reports and the different things that were going on, even trying to explain QBE to them, if, all of you in the room will shake on that. We also have to be, you know, patient and responsible when we're trying to bring someone into the fold. If we are not patient with them and try to model for them that we want you to be successful and help us be successful right away, they'll continue to be isolated.
Jim, talk to me about when you get the phone call, and I know that all you four get the phone calls. When someone calls you and says, "You know, we think things might be going wrong in this county," or "We think that this board might be moving in the wrong direction," what's the first thing you think? What's the first bit of research you do and why?
Well, you know, generally, generally, it's someone from the governor's office calling to tell me about a problem that they have, and I automatically say no.[1773.42][1773.42](laughter) And then we get into a conversation about why this is important. You know, frankly, frankly, I always ask the question, are people at the board meeting listening to each other? Are they hearing what other people are saying? I ask the question, is the chair a good person who allows... I ask the question, is the chair a good person who allows board members to have the opportunity to speak and to make their own comments rather than selecting individual board members to speak on an issue? And so, you know, I just kind of go down the line on asking some of those questions and generally, you know, I ask how many people are on the board and when you got nine, it's a disaster waiting to happen. If you got seven, it's a little better. And if you got five, you got, you got, you got a real promise there. But it's, it's, it's just, it's just too many people to establish all the kind of relationships and so that's, that's a big issue. And, and then finally, it's always about accreditation, okay? And frankly, when, it's almost always about accreditation. And when you have a board member who can't spell accreditation, you are in trouble then about getting them to understand all of the pieces that make up accreditation and why it's important and why it matters to student achievement and having a good school system.
Zinda?
When we start talking about problems with the board, one of the things that I like to do is to be able to have an opportunity to contact each board member individually prior to going in to ask a couple of questions and it depends on what's going on. But typically, what's going well in the district, what's not going so well? And that perspective coming together sometimes can start off the conversation with just saying, you're all saying the same thing. But I think the other thing that I remember is, the magic wand that I have when I go in only works when the magic starts from within. We can't go in and fix anything. People have to be willing to accept and part of that acceptance is, what is it that I need to do differently? Because even as the most perfect board member that ever sat on a board, one has to make some changes and some adjustments when it comes to compromise. Now, I quite frankly, don't think that the number of people on the board makes a dime's worth of difference. I believe that it's incumbent upon board members to be about public service. This is not a stepping stone for, for the future and it's also not a gotcha opportunity for the superintendent or the football coach or whomever. And those of us who send people to a school board with that idea that they are going to make all the difference, you know, we start out with that, that problem. I, I think too, that having an education background is not a necessity. One does not have to have taught school and sometimes that person having taught school means that they have a very rigid perspective about what is going on. They don't see things globally. I think the other thing is too, that in this state, we have quite a diversity of school board members. And regardless of where they come from, regardless of what their experience has been, regardless of their level of education, if they walk into that room willing to listen, not just with their ears, but with their heart and willing to ask questions, help me to understand. Tony used GPE. Everybody in here may not know that that's Georgia Partnership for Excellence in Education, but we have to ask those questions. And when we do that, we're helped to understand because remember, regardless of what level I have, what experience I have, there are people in the community who are just like me.
The term, we talked about data too, and I, I just would give two examples, one with Tony and one with Jim, is Tony was kind enough to go down with me to South Carolina, what, five or six years ago? And their state board was not at a very functional place. Our ability to use the transparency and data that they had within South Carolina actually put us into the room in some ways with better understanding of the data and information that they had. And it allowed for that conversation to start just asking questions about, do you realize this is what you're doing? And then Jim and I had that same experience using an iPad on our way down to Warren County in terms of being able to take the data that's being gathered to start to have a more meaningful conversation. So not only do we have an opportunity to use data, but I think we've got an opportunity to model it for others that may not necessarily understand how it can impact change positively within their community. And I know others that are in the room, our archway friends, they do that as well. So where there's a consistency of that approach, hopefully it starts feeling a little less like Atlanta, I'm from Atlanta and I'm here to help and everybody runs out of the room. And, and I'm from GSBA and, and really starts to feel like that partner relationship where you're building the capacity within the community to take that ownership of, of their hopes and their aspirations.
Tony?
Yeah, I wanted to make a point too, and as we started talking about warning signs and issues coming up, which, which obviously do happen, one of the things good functioning boards can do is rather than finger point and try to make it personal is start asking questions. You know, do we think this is a roles and responsibilities issue? Maybe there needs to be a, a discussion, a reminder with everyone on the roles and responsibilities. Is it misinformation? Make sure that that information is made clear to that board member and perhaps they're misinterpreting it on purpose or not. Make sure the community has the correct information, which may then defeat the purpose of if there's a board member giving misinformation. So try to use thoughtful strategies in terms of trying to negate what's going on or bringing that person back in because like I said, it's five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people. It's, it's a relationship. Things are going to happen, whether they're on purpose, whether they're on mistake. But the first thing is how can we try to keep it, keep it within the family and try to work through it? If sometimes you have to use the code of ethics, the state code of ethics sort of as a hammer, reminding, you know, at the end of the year, you're going to have to sign off and attest to the fact that you abided by the state code of ethics. You need to involve your attorney to make sure they're interpreting that correctly. But there are, try to do some things to work through it and keep the team together rather than the first thing is, well, they're a bad board member and we're not going to work with them.
You know, I would, I would talk just a minute about the media because they are important in every community, whether you've got a weekly newspaper or you've got a paper that comes out every day. I think it's really important that board members and superintendents and their communication staff, that they go sit down and explain issues so that a new reporter, as we're talking about, a brand new reporter or, or for somebody who's even been there a while, have them understand the issue, understand why it's important to this county, why it would make a difference in this county. I mean, I mean, I mean, it's really investing in, in time and at the same time, trying to have some transparency about what you're trying to do. It is not, it is not a good deal to try to ram something through and not have anybody understand why it's important to this community. And then the other item is that I think that it's important that the roles and responsibilities of the board are laid out and the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent are laid out so there's no question about, about, about what those responsibilities are. And then have them in front of people so that when people start crossing the line, somebody can say, well now, you know, that's, that's really my responsibility, whether it's the superintendent or a, a board member. And, and, and the fact that you're transparent about that means that you are, you have a good relationship and you can have that kind of discussions rather than someone getting upset about someone crossing over into different roles and responsibilities.
Sure.
I wanted to add, as Mr. Bostic brought up the media, this is a good segue to, to talk about something that I know you believe is critical and that is the partnerships with your community. If you have and develop and nurture and it's, it's work, you've got to continue to do it, and Tom used the term I liked this morning, just real talk, but being open and transparent with your community, that is, you don't want the community to just learn about what they think they know about the school board just through the media. Not that the media is necessarily going to always be negative, but by you sharing accurate information, by you sharing areas that you have challenges in, nothing breeds credibility. You know, you expect the schools, boards expect the superintendent and school boards need to model continuous improvement. That means here are some things we think we're doing well, here are some challenges we face. Being open and transparent with the community, your partners, having real talk. A number of districts now, when they have challenges are going through the community for input. I'm looking around the room. Strategic planning, we have done a number of strategic plans with a number of districts and I see some of them in the room, where we reach out to hundreds of stakeholders first, start the process. Number of districts have had community engagement sessions on finance and budget where, just give us some of your ideas, policy and so forth. So more and more of you sharing your successes and your challenges with your stakeholders really will bring, bring more support and whether media, don't just rely on media coverage for your public perception.
And that media piece is, I think we all are a little nervous, particularly in big market medias, media markets like, like Atlanta. I think we step into the role as a board member and we're nervous around that and we assume that the media understands how a proper board functions. And, and I think what we then do is we open ourselves up to the, the way that they enjoy reporting. And to that, to that end is, you know, if, if, if Zinda and I are in agreement all the time and she's my board chair and we operate as a board with her being our spokesperson, that doesn't sell a whole lot of newspapers. They don't like to see a harmony. And so what they're going to do is if they see a fissure of any kind, they're going to put the microphone in Zinda's face first and then they're going to come to me and go, do you agree or disagree? And if I answer, then I open myself up to being a part of that. That is a culture that works well within a legislative branch of government, I believe, but not well within a board framework where the board acts as, as an individual body. And so those rules that you put in place that may, when you've got a chair or whoever the individual is that's supposed to speak for the board, when you've got that, it may seem unfair, it may seem like somebody's trying to grab all of the attention, but I think it's put in there for a reason. I, I think back on the time a state board worked and one of the, one of the news reporters for one of the big media, I think it was WAGA, the state board had the issue of whether or not, it started in Gwinnett County, whether or not Harry Potter should be in the school libraries or not. And Gwinnett County did a great job of handling that issue. The only issue in front of us as a state board was whether or not Gwinnett County Board had acted in the role that it was supposed to be. And I ended up being the one in front of the camera and I said, it's, that is our only issue. And she said, y'all are not very sexy. And I said, as a state board in this role, sexy, we are not. And, and she was disappointed because she wanted something that sold more headlines and we just couldn't deliver it.
All right, we're about out of time. I do want to open it up for a couple of questions. Does anyone out there have some questions for our expert panelists? Take advantage of it. Yes, over here in the corner.
Let me bring your mics.
Thank you. Kelly Wilson from Bad Osta City Schools. As a member of a non-board, board, let me say thank you for your positive words of encouragement because I was going to go home and say, we need to pack up, we're just never going to get anything accomplished. But we work very well together and we have a great board right now, so I'm pleased to report that. My question is, when you have someone, individual, and we all know it's going to happen, or it can, that doesn't come into the fold, won't accept the relational grace gestures for harmony, how do you address that? What, I'll give you a pseudo example. You're in executive session. You have a discussion that's supposed to stay in executive session. Two days later, you're at the grocery store and you hear what you said in executive session. How do you truthfully and honestly combat that or fix that and, and not do it in a way that's embarrassing or more hurtful, I guess is the question.
Let me try to begin to respond to that question by first of all, saying that when the board, if you select your own officers, the board needs to be intentional and decisive about the election of its board chair and vice chair. Because when board members behave less than positively, it is incumbent upon elected official to address elected official. Typically, we want to go and grab the superintendent and say, get him or get her. That's not the way it's done. So it is incumbent upon the board to first of all, select its leadership appropriately. But the other thing is that based upon the code of ethics, it now becomes the responsibility of the board to hold each other accountable for behaving well because you set the standard for that whole district. If the board is functioning inappropriately, then it's going to happen in the local school and you're going to end up with discipline problems among the students. So the board first of all, has to remind themselves over and over again in writing and in meetings of what is appropriate behavior. But the other thing is, when it comes to executive session, that is a breach of the code of ethics. Because what happens in executive session is only public based upon the vote. We don't talk about who slammed the table, who was crying, who was using bad words. None of that comes out and therefore, if something hits the community, you know who it is. You just have to go ahead and address it. You address it like grownups. You don't use four-letter words, but you lay it out that this is unacceptable and if it happens again, there will be consequences. Now we have to do what we do at home. Those consequences can't be ambiguous. You have to come together and determine what the consequences are and that they will be within the law. Does that help?
Yeah, I wanted to add also that in the code of ethics, if you have to, and we encourage boards to use it sparingly, but you could have an open hearing on the board member. If you read the code of ethics, there is a hearing provision there and we've had a couple of cases. The other is, I'd strongly suggest you have the board attorney talk to the board member because when they run for reelection, they're going to have to sign an affidavit that they abided by the code of ethics. That's a new piece that was put in last year. Falsifying that and knowing that, look, we have witnesses to this, falsifying that is a felony. I mean, it's a really serious legal piece. Those are some of the things that you may have to do, but you'd rather, you'd rather not do.
I think we have one more question here in the back.
Great, great conversation. Thank you all for your participation today. Back to candidates for school boards. By the way, my name is Jim McMahon, Vice Chair, DeKalb County. I get Dr. Bostic, what you were saying regarding some board members can't even pronounce strategic plan, much less execute or oversee. I think education's a big part of that. I think Cis Henry penned a, a great piece this week regarding Atlanta Public Schools and what quali, what qualities should we look for? Would you comment for a moment on, you have stated that there has been, GSBA gives education for aspiring candidates. Would y'all be open to, from a state legislation, but a local authorization regarding mandated education, not necessarily college deg- education, not necessarily college degree, but pertaining to school board and governance, and the information needed to best be a school board member?
Well, first, let me say, the Georgia School Board Association has everything that you need to learn how to be a good school board member. And what you need to do is, you actually need to be a participant, but you also need to follow what the rules are. And I have to say that, I have to say that with Cis here and all of these fine people here, you have the ability to really, really be very well-educated and know what to do and what not to do. So, first, I plead with you to follow those sets of rules. Secondly, frankly, I am probably the wrong person to ask that question, because I would say that you need to be smart and capable and bright and able to understand finances and understand data. I mean, the school board is not just another thing that you wake up one morning and decide, "You know, I really want to be a school board member," and just go do that. I mean, there are really some intentional things that you have to do if you're going to be a good school board member. And frankly, that requires that you understand data, and that you can understand the budget. And frankly, the first day you go into a school board member, I mean, a school board meeting, and you see the budget, and it's the biggest number you've ever seen in your whole life, that's bad for the school board, okay? Because it's going to take a long time to get people to the point that they can be a good school board member.
One more question.
One thing on that, too, Jim, I think that having been on both sides, having been codified at, and having, doing some codifying, I think that it's easier to codify what's in the head and how you create those types of qualifications. When Zenda talked about that everybody needs to serve from the heart, too, I'm not sure that we're good as a society at being able to codify that. And so, trying to create these litmus tests, I think sometimes, in an effort to do that, we miss the real heart for service. And so, I think it's incumbent upon the communities to start to look for those servants that are willing to do that. So, we need to be very careful in that area, in my opinion.
And that's why Brad and I make a good team.
And I agree, I agree.
Last question.
Good morning. My name is Thad Mayfield, DeKalb Board of Education, and I want to thank you for your comments this morning as well. I'd like to ask this question. Can you describe, or grade even, your assessment of the culture in school districts and cultures in the communities, and how well they match the evolving expectations of boards? Does that question make sense?
I think as long as we're not trying to use a "no child left behind," AYP, single measurement, I think that we have such a diversity, it's a dynamic process, that systems that have their act together can lose that grip in the blink of an eye. Those that are far behind on the continuum can make progress very, very quickly. But I think that as a rule, if you have a community that is dysfunctional, or doesn't have the capacity to create the functionality itself, you're probably going to see that evidenced at the governance levels. I think it floats up. But having said that, I think that all of this is well within the grounds of good people coming together to create better outcomes for their communities.
Okay, one last comment, please.
I think that when a school board comes together, one of the things it has to remember is that most people in the community do not have children in school. And therefore, it is incumbent upon the Board of Education to keep it simple and to bring it forward, so that, as these gentlemen have indicated, information is given, and it is indeed explained for everyone. And therefore, you know, we have to get away from the educationese. For example, Georgia School Boards Association has a finance toolkit that allows school board members to go to PTAs, Kiwanis Club, whatever, and keep all of that confusing stuff simple, where it makes sense, and so, people can understand, "This is where we get our money, this is what we can do, this is what we cannot." I think if we do that in all arenas in the community, then we have a collaborative effort that can work.
Excellent question to close us out. An area for future research, we might say. We can figure that out, hopefully, one day. So, thank you to our panelists. Please, a round of applause for their wealth of experience and knowledge.